Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM on September 28th, 2022. Time for the second regular meeting of the Washington Courthouse City Council. At this time, Mr. Shilts will offer the invocation and I will lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens and the city of Washington Courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. Thank you for being there and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for everything and in your name, Lord, amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call. Kelly?
Blair?
Here.
Chrisman?
Here.
Hawk?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Shilts?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
We have the minutes from our council meeting on September 14th, 2022. Does anyone see any changes, things that are not accurate? Or would you like to accept them as presented?
I'll move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Blair?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shilts?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Do we have any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
And we have, I believe, the Service Safety and Recreation Committee minutes. Mr. Hawk, you're up.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, September 14th at 6:00 PM. Ted Hawk presided and those in attendance were Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Steve Shilts, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Jed Fenare, police chief, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Ron Sompson, service director, Mr. Joe Denon, city manager, Mr. Mark Bittsick, city attorney, Mr. Sean Remington, and Mrs. Rachel Trevy, Triangle Trail Representatives. Number one, Mr. Sean Remington and Mrs., is that Rochelle or Rachel?
Rochelle.
Rochelle. And Mrs. Rochelle Trev addressed the committee and requested support of the continuation of the trail on Dayton Avenue, Veterans Way, and Oakland Avenue. Mr. Remington presented drawings of areas that included bike lanes and crosswalk enhancement. The committee noted their support. The committee expressed a consensus that alternative means of trail construction was acceptable. Number two, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department. Number three, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Police Department. Number four, Chief Fenare requested permission to apply for a grant to be used for Motorola body cameras. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the grant application. Number five, the committee discussed a previous citizen's request regarding change of signage at Paint Street and Main Street. The committee recommended that the signage at the intersection remain the same. Number six, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council recommending the bid of Kinison Excavating Incorporated for the water main replacement project for Lakeview Avenue, not to exceed $690,833. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mr. Joe Denon, Recording Secretary.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I'll second that.
All righty, thank you. And roll call.
Blair?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shilts?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Thank you. A couple of housekeeping items. I recall that we already sit in committee October 27th, 6 to 8 for trick or treat. I don't believe, Mr. Bittsick, there's anything additional we need to do there, is there?
No.
Okay. And new legislation, you're allowing us to buy that Baumford mower, which will help us maintain creek banks in particular, and a tractor so you can have something to attach that mower to. And also then we are proceeding with ODOT for bridge inspection services, something I would like to express thanks to District 6 that they offer that service to us. It has been very beneficial over the years. Tonight, I put it in front of you, if you can get out this packet. Once a year, I look at the census information other than, well, since this year, I'll look at it a lot, but once a year, I'll take a look at that in different communities within the region. And I want to stress that this isn't a competitive thing, but we'll talk about all some things that I think challenge, show some of our assumptions about the community. Interestingly, the first graph that you have, if you look at Washington Courthouse, the 2010 census and the 2020 census, we grew nicely there. And then they ever so nicely do a population projection effective as of July 1, 2021, which we continued to head in the positive direction, which for a rural community these days is rather well because out of those group of five communities that I have down there, Hillsborough declined a little bit in population, although in the population estimate, they go up like two people. Wilmington's lost a little bit, Circleville, and even Chillicothe. But, I'm sorry, Circleville grew rather well, but it would be Chillicothe, Wilmington, and Hillsborough that have seen slight population decline. If you look at the county, the next graph, it's important to remember because demographics and geography explain a great deal of many things in life about how enormous Ross County is compared to Fayette. In Ross, you've got almost 77,000 people and Fayette, you're just about 29, slightly less than that. So the population that the community sits in within, within the county makes a tremendous difference. And then if you even look a little bit further and you go to the next slide and remember that geography-wise, Ross is also enormous, just in terms of land area. Highland is also substantial. We would be Fayette in terms of physical area, the smallest of that group. And if you thought about it a little bit further, I didn't get out a map for you, but think about a map of Highland County. The road system is all oriented to Hillsborough. If you want to go from point A to point B in Highland County, nine times out of 10, you're going to go through Hillsborough. It's very hard not to, really. And that plays a tremendous role in how those communities develop. Now, what is interesting, if you start to look at the population itself, because your next graph is percent population under five years of age. There, in comparison to a community like Chillicothe, in my opinion, you're doing well with 8% because you want to see, the goal isn't to turn the place into Columbus, but you want to see, study population growth and you don't want to see population overwhelmingly characterized or concentrated in one particular area. So that looks healthy. If we go to the percent of the population, the next one, under the age of 18, there you have almost a quarter of the population in Washington Courthouse in that age group, which is nice. And if we continue on, percent population 65 years and older, that actually, by the pop, by the July 1 estimate, has actually gone down for us a little bit from 19% to 17.4%. And sometimes there's, gets in a mindset that Washington Courthouse is only older people and that's one of the younger communities within the group. Of those five, Hillsborough would be theoretically the oldest in a way, if you want to look at it that way, with 25% of the population being 65 years or older. Wilmington or Circleville, it's slightly higher than us, and then Chillicothe at the 20% mark. Number of households, your next slide, that corresponds logically with the population numbers. And by households, when the census counts that, it's not necessarily people who are related, but it's people living in the same housing unit. No matter how they, they ended up there, they will classify that as a household. And that tracks logically with the population numbers. Persons per household, nothing too remarkable there. It's a little bit different in Circleville than the surrounding communities, but it makes sense with some younger folks that that's a percentage a little bit higher for us than some of the other comparable communities. Owner occupied housing rate. 53.7% versus some other communities that are in their 40s, which doesn't look too bad. Chillicothe does do well there at 58. Then I pulled out, living in the same house one year ago, because you're kind of interested to see how transient that population is, and here it's not. In fact, we are the highest at 84.8%. Now, you always want to show some movement there because you want to see that people are buying and selling property, but you're interested in seeing how transient they are and that looks very nice. Median household income. Now, I want to talk a little bit and remind you what that means. Median household income is a measure at which half of households have income above that level and half below. Now, it's highest in Chillicothe, then Circleville, we're very close to Circleville by that measurement, and then Wilmington and Hillsborough, a little bit further down the line there. I also did for you, if you measured it per capita, which is interesting, because there, Chillicothe would be at the top of the list, followed by Washington Courthouse, then Circleville, then Wilmington, and then Hillsborough. So depending on how you look at it, you get a little bit different makeup of how those communities look when you look at them in comparison to each other. And again, this is not a competition. It's just looking at the information that we have in areas where you might want to try to do better and also where some strengths are. And per capita income is simply total income divided by the population. Persons in poverty by percent, there, interestingly, it's higher in Circleville, Washington Courthouse, and Hillsborough than it is here. Does slightly better in Chillicothe. We do quite well there. And again, this is the U.S. Census Bureau information. Now, I note that on all the graphs and I also note that September of '22, because as they update that and change that, if you looked at it from six months from now, it might be slightly different. Percent households with a broadband internet subscription. I included the slide, some people look at that as how folks' access to the internet. Some people look at it as an economic issue or social issue these days, but there, it's very similar to what it is in Circleville, highest in Wilmington, and then Chillicothe, relatively high too, and most in Hillsborough. Households with a computer percent, this was probably a more useful census data 20 years ago because people access the internet in different ways now. But there, you know, you're slightly behind Chillicothe, you're ahead of the other communities in the group, not, I say ahead, but again, I'm not trying to make comparisons, not a race, it's just information. Percent of population 16-plus years in the civilian labor force, at 57.7%, that's good. Means people are working. Sometimes we can get a negative attitude that everybody lays around, nobody does anything anymore. Again, census information is a little bit behind the times, but that's a very positive measurement. Total retail sales, it makes sense that that's highest in Chillicothe because you've got, A, that's the largest population group, and two, it sits in the county with the most people in the largest land area. We perform exceptionally well in that measure. What's interesting is how well Hillsborough does, but again, it's in that big county and everybody has to go there, basically. It puzzles me a little bit about Circleville, but there folks, increasingly, that's increasingly in the suburban Columbus orbit and they have different options. Total accommodation and food service sales, again, that makes sense with Chillicothe. It makes sense with us. Wilmington kind of surprises me, but you've got the college there. You've got people dropping off their kids, visiting their kid, that, there's some logic to that. Persons without health insurance, again, you're looking at that for my interest is really what inferences does it tell you about economic activity? There, that looks good for us because we're, there, you want the number to be low and you're second from the bottom. The next two graphs are concerning because we don't do well in them. High school graduate or higher percent of persons 25 years and older. So in other words, you could have at the moment a great graduation rate, but census is measuring it for people 25 years and older. There, the graph implies that you might, that might be an issue you want to take a look at. And the next one is a similar one. It majors bachelor's degree or higher percent of persons 25 years or older. There, we don't look so good. Race and origin. None of the communities in question are particularly diverse. I do that out of my, I do this graph out of my own personal interest, basically, but it, it doesn't provide you a whole lot of great information. They're not particularly, none of the communities, Hillsborough, Wilmington, Circleville, Washington Courthouse, or Chillicothe are particularly horribly diverse places. Language, other than English spoken at home, there, it's highest in Wilmington. I would imagine that's the effect of the college. Here, it's 2%. Foreign-born persons, again, higher in Wilmington. College. Washington Courthouse, it's interestingly higher than Circleville or Chillicothe, which I've always found interesting, and that's stayed consistently that way over the years when I've looked at this.
Is that because of foreign companies, like you said?
I would assume that that's going to be the driver behind that.
Sure.
And then population per square mile, which none of the, the communities are particularly densely populated. I would have guessed that Circleville, Washington Courthouse, and Wilmington would have been almost identical. Chillicothe makes sense, but you would have thought that those three would have been an, almost identical, and there is a little bit of variation there. But why I like to do this with the census quick facts is it's very easy to pull up a group of communities and the, the table and the information lines up very easily for you, but it's a very easy way to interact with the census information. Anybody can go on the internet and do that. Again, not a competition, but it's interesting to see what your assumptions about the community are, and then when you look at actual data, what those actually are in the real world. Again, census information is always a little bit behind, you can't call it current news, but it is certainly a snapshot of where you were at the time. And the population estimates, when they do those, have always been surprisingly pretty accurate. But that is, at the moment, a number that they have theorized and projected. Now, things can radically change that. Certainly, development can change that quite radically, but it's nice for a rural community that there's been some steady growth there. And the per capita income numbers and median income numbers were quite reassuring.
Any questions or comments?
So, all right. You said that whenever, you know, the stereotypical person living in Washington Courthouse is often assumed to be like an older person or an older community. Is that what you said?
Yes. You assume that they look, for lack of better description. Dale, you're a kind-hearted person, so we use you that they look like Dale Lynch.
So what I'm seeing from the numbers is that we have a high population of people over five years of age compared to the other.
Uh huh.
And we are declining a little bit in all percent population under 18, but still a higher population generally than other communities.
Yeah, what you, yeah. And people have different opinions about this. If you talk to somebody that was radically concerned about the environment, they would tell you that it's better to have fewer people. The problem with that is you need young people, you need that progression to make the world work. You know, somebody's got to be, you've got Sean Remington out here, somebody's got to be the electrician.
Yeah.
And when they get to old Mr. Shilts' age, they don't want to be an electrician anymore. So you've got to have that progression of folks to fill those roles in society. And typically, demographically, if it was ideal, you'd have a steady, slow growth, which is what we've achieved. Now, a lot of things that would be nice, that would make it easier, and again, I don't want to, don't think that I want to turn the place into Columbus because I don't, and please don't put that in the paper. If we had a few more folks, it would make some retail food opportunities that people are interested in a whole lot easier to attract.
Yeah.
And movie theaters and things like that.
Yes, but we will always have the blessing and the challenge of where we're at because it's relatively easy for our population to access that Dayton Beaver Creek area, South Side Columbus, Mason, North Side Cincinnati. That will always be a blessing, but in some ways it presents, particularly on the retail food side, some challenges because they'll, you know, company XYZ sits there and thinks to itself, yeah, this looks maybe like it'll work, but these folks within this relatively short period of time can get to all these other locations.
Yes, and, and so continuing the, what I'm noticing generally is if we have an increasing population under five years of age, but in a decent population under 18, yet still decreasing, can also combined with the fact that generally we are seeing that our population generally is less formally educated. If I'm to build a, what a person from this data, what does this person look like in Washington Courthouse, I'm seeing someone who's transitioning from 18 years old, they're going to 19, 20, early 20s, they're having kids early, they're not necessarily going to college, they're staying here based off of what we know with the transient nature, we are less transient. So they're probably from here, having kids early here, but yet not pursuing outside formal educational experiences. Do you think that is a fair assessment of what to draw from this?
I think that that's reading a lot into that.
Okay.
Not necessarily incorrect, but that's reading a great deal into it.
Okay.
Because you would make assumptions that economically they ought to look like the lowest group in the five communities and they're not.
In terms of, you said economically the lowest?
Well, then you would assume that they would be on the bottom in the per capita income measurement and they're not.
Yeah.
Or the median income agent, measurement and they're, they're not.
Unless one reason why they're able to have kids is the opportunity that we have here of transitioning people into blue collar work.
That has always been a strong element in the community and something, an opportunity we hope to be able to continue to offer.
Yeah.
One of the industries that we talked to today, I'm sorry, not today, it would have been Tuesday. Potential high-quality jobs and, you know, quite honestly, they would prefer young person graduates, high school, goes to work for them and works for them for the next 30 years and they will provide them the educational opportunities that they need to sustain their, their role within the corporation. But that is certainly an opportunity that we hope to be continued to offer. For a long time, you know, there was a tremendous focus that everybody has to go to college and they, they, they don't. Some people, that's just not going to work for them, it's not what they were cut out to do. And increasingly, there's a demand for skilled trades. Certainly, there's a huge demand for people with a basic work ethic that understand, you know, I have a job and golly gee, I got to go to it every day, five days a week. But that, those opportunities will continue to exist in society for some time.
I have noted more high school students too participating I have noted more high school students, too, participating in what I would call associate degrees, Southern State. Even some of the top students are staying around here, getting their associate degree, and then moving into a four-year school. Because of money, costs of college, and so on. It's really been a change, and it's one of the things that, you know, you can't figure out, well, why then did Southern State close the campus here, which breaks my heart, but because more and more kids are doing what I teach, which is CCP classes. And why? Because they can get it free. The books don't cost, the education doesn't cost. Makes sense, if I was a student, I'd do the same thing. Anyway, I think that's one thing that you're seeing now, too, just because the cost of education, it's really expensive. Mr. Hawk, did you have something? You were starting to say something.
Well, I have a degree in secondary education, my wife has a degree in nursing and elementary education, and for most of our life, we didn't use those.
Because there's need for other things. Like you said, I agree 100%, not everybody needs to go to a four-year college.
No, and that was, when I was a young, that was really drilled into you, that you had to do this, or the universe would cease to exist, and when, thankfully, they don't have me talk to high school students very often, and I think it's because I traumatize Dale, the school people. Because one of the things that I typically, if it's the topic of why I'm there, it's appropriate, is I tell them the very basic observation, and I tell them, you know, you can look at this as, this middle-aged guy, he doesn't know anything, and take it for what it's worth. Especially at that age, there is a tendency for parents or guardians, and sometimes school people, to say, you know, you have to do this, or, you know, your father was a doctor, and, you know, you are going to do that, that is your path in life. And I don't tell them not to, you know, planning and thinking about your future is important, but what's far more important is really figuring out what it is you enjoy. Because you could be a wonderful, we'll take Mr. Pittsick, for example, you could be a wonderful lawyer, but if you hate it, and doing that for the next 40 years of your life, but what I really wanted to do in life is be, I don't know, a stained glass artist. Sometimes mom and dad will look at things like that and say, how are you going to make a living? And that's something to think about, but people that enjoy what they do are usually rather good at it, because they'll do it a lot. And it sounds very simple and silly, but if you enjoy it and you do it a lot, that's how you learn it. I mean, anything that you do a lot, you get better at. I'm sure that Steve Schultz is much better at waxing a car than I am, because he enjoys that, and he's done it a lot. Whereas, I don't really enjoy it, and consequently, don't do it very often. You know, that, it's really about the young person finding what they connect with in life, and more than often, that story turns out fine then.
When I used to hire people, I looked for people, not that was looking for a job, but was looking for a career. That was the people I wanted to hire. If they were just looking for a job, that wasn't so great. They were looking for a career, now we've got something to talk about.
Yeah.
Bill, Bill Swine, who was in the car business, once said that he didn't need an education to get rich, he just hired educated people to make him rich.
A lot of people did that, that's exactly right. That's exactly what Henry Ford did when he started Ford Corporation.
Well, at any rate, these are interesting.
Yes, they are.
Things to look at.
And I wouldn't stress, it's not a competition, because how the other communities change over time has an impact on us for good and bad.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't want to be in the middle, surrounded by areas of significant problems, but that makes it more of a challenge.
Well, thank you for the report, it's very.
You're welcome.
One of my top students, who I've had for two years, so she's obviously interested in education, just enlisted in the Marines. She's a young lady. I said, thank you for your service, she's going in as soon as she graduates, she's already signed up. Anyway, the finance director normally would be here, but I gave her permission to miss because her husband is having health issues. What about the city attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I have no report this evening.
Has the mowing slowed down any?
We're still mowing.
We're still mowing.
We are.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, how many yards do you think you mowed so far this summer, this year?
Eight hundred maybe.
Okay, wow, that's it.
Some of them multiple times.
Yeah, over and over.
All right, there's nobody signed up to speak, and I think everybody had an opportunity to sign up if they wanted it, so we will move on to legislation previously introduced. First is ordinance number nine, 2022, it's second reading.
I'll make a motion that we put ordinance number nine, 2022, on a second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine dash 2022, an ordinance authorizing and directing Christina Collins to create an accounting fund.
The rest are new legislation items, starting with resolution number R 35, 2022, first reading.
I'll make a motion to resolution R 35, 2022, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R 35 dash 2022, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into a contract with Parsons Equipment for purchase of a Bonford Hawk variable forward arm, B R A boom mower.
And resolution number R 36, 2022, first reading.
I'll move, we put resolution R 36, 2022, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R 36 dash 2022, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Deere and Company for the purchase of an Agmac tractor 800750.
And our last legislation of the evening, resolution number R 37, 2022, first reading.
I'll make a motion that we place resolution number R 37, 2022, on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R 37 dash 2022, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio, referencing P I D. number 117554, Municipal Bridge Inspection Program.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, miscellaneous, Mr. Johnson, what do you got this evening?
I don't think I have anything this evening, Mr. Chairman, I want to keep it short, and we can get on.
I have nothing.
Wow, everybody's hungry. Mr. Schultz.
Well, you know, I was taking my daily walk the other day, and went down by this splash pad, and that looks great, that blue paint they put on there, it really, really makes it stand out now. I like that, it gives it a rich look, you know, and a very expensive look, and I like that, so, and I like the idea of this, Mr. Denon, thank you for giving us this, this U.S. Census, that is some interesting, very interesting information, so, yes, but thank you very much for that, that's about all I have.
Mr. Christman?
I don't have a whole lot, but in, along with Joe's observations, that lady that's on Fox at 9:30 on Sunday morning, that show, like the 60 Minutes show, she visited, or somebody visited, the Amish in Pennsylvania, of course, they picked out the most successful ones, but eighth grade education, and it seemed to be that they were taught to work, of course, at a young age, which is okay, I guess, I don't like the work, physical labor, but, too old. But the one kid started out early, and his dad preached to him from like 14 years of age and older to buy, buy a house, buy a house, I think when he was 21, or 22, or maybe 25, he had $50,000 saved up to put down on his first house, so there are some conversations among some people, that a lot of these kids, which I'm sure they all, we've all talked about it up here, trade schools or something along that line, plumber, electrician, welder, and they're making a lot more money than a lot of the bachelor of arts degrees.
Teachers.
Yes, well, yeah, that's always been out of bounds, but nevertheless, we do live in a good country, and we're all going to survive somehow or another, if Putin don't go completely nuts, that's all I thought.
Very good. Mr. Hawk, what have you got?
Well, I, that packet of papers Joe gave us, I kind of flipped through it, and man, I thought, oh, these graphs, what, what's that word? And then, then when he explained it, it was pretty interesting.
It is interesting, it's interesting how that's changed over time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was.
I agree. Mr. Blair? I'd like to thank the citizens for their visits this evening, hopefully, it's something said that would satisfy why you're here. Mr. Reddington's become a permanent fixture here, we're glad to have him here, he's fascinated with the whole, the whole concept, I think he goes home and frame by frames the video every time, to see how, how things went, but thank you, folks, for coming this evening. And also, I want to say my thoughts and prayers are with the people in Florida that are facing this hurricane, it's, devastation is going to be felt for a long time, and that's all I have, sir. Thank you very much. I have nothing other than to say, thanks to all of our city employees, you're doing such a good job, and that includes the other six sitting up here with me, I always appreciate the fact that you are serving the citizens of Washington Courthouse, and I think doing it a good job. With that, how about a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned.